Are you looking for quality, handcrafted, one-of-a-kind, unique items? Look no farther than Off the Square Artisans. We have over 40 artists ranging from woodworking to blacksmithing, photography, rug weaving, handmade soaps, and everything in between. If you're looking for home decor or a gift for that hard-to-shop-for friend or family member, come on into Off the Square Artisans located at 205 East High Street, one block east of the south side of the Rockville Square. Wednesday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks for coming. First, we have to approve the minutes from the three between.
We have two here, four, three, and then five, fifteen, I think, correct?
Right.
Yes, we do.
Then I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for May 15, 2023 meeting, and the April 3rd, 2023.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay? All right. All right, then we have payroll, an amount of $214,443.11.
Then I'll make a motion, we approve payroll in the amount of $214,443.11.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. All right, then either acknowledge or receive the payroll claims, and the accounts payable report in an amount of $282,117.07.
And I'll make a motion, we acknowledge or receive the payroll claims in the amount of $282,117.07.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. And we got a big claim just coming up.
Yes.
And we can't pay a bill.
Yeah, I see.
Any questions on the claims?
A lot of as, home materials, $161,000.
Yep.
$161,000.
And we're in voices on the file, and, yeah.
$150,000 for the ambulance.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve claims in the amount of $987,149.82.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. And understand those dollar expenditures on the highway and on the ambulance building is covered by insurance and community crossing stuff. Not all. Normal stuff. Have new business coming up. Before we move on, I asked Cindy Todd to come. I don't want to spend too much of her time on this. You may have seen us discussing beforehand, we were just getting some information here before our regular meeting. We obviously don't make any decisions or anything outside of regular meeting. But she had a meeting last Friday, fairgrounds, with elected officials and other people involving childcare situation, education in the community. And definitely, and she can explain this for a long time, a deficit on available position spots, places for our youngsters to go, all the way from infants to toddlers and up. So after seeing this presentation, and the need in Park County, and the availability of perhaps some things that can be done to help some of that, at least maybe another 30 spots or so, I asked Cindy if there was any one-time expenditure that might benefit our young people that we have funds to do. We still have art funds available. The tough part about art funds, the American Rescue Plan dollars, those have to be committed to spend by 2024. They have to be spent by the end of 2025. We have had so many requests for those funds, it's just tough to choose who I go where. They're very limited in scope, limited in what they can do. And we have bought multiple items for the county. We have to be very careful in our minds to make sure that everybody in the county is going to benefit from whatever we spend these dollars on. We just can't pick and choose who we want to win and lose in these things. So I asked Cindy if she had any information or any knowledge of any place that a one-time expenditure, which will benefit, obviously, from the county, we might be able to assist with, and she did have an idea. So if you come up, Cindy, real quick, and just explain what this is, we're looking at, and what the ask is, and then we can consider that. While she comes up, I want you to understand, we do have an art committee, and that committee is made up of council members, all the three of us, Cindy, Emergency Management Director, and the whole purpose of this is to make sure that we have the whole spectrum covered of people who have needs and understand what the needs are before we go spending these dollars. It is a commissioner decision to make. The statute is very clear on that. But we don't make any of those decisions without having the input of that committee. So every time we have decisions to make, I've called a meeting together, we discuss those, and we have all the advice and all the decisions. And we've not ever had a decision that was not 100% supported by that art committee. In this case, if this grant is something that we think we can participate in, that grant has to be in next week. We don't have time, we're leaving tomorrow for a couple weeks. We don't have time to call it an art committee meeting. But I just want you to understand that that art committee is an advisory committee, it's still the board of directors who are obligated by the state to make the decisions to where those dollars will be committed. So should we make the decision for or against this request today, commissioners are well within their bounds to make that decision, because that's what statute says, and that statute is very clear on, that is, who will make those decisions. So, that being said, tell us what you're, what you're looking at.
Sure, so each of you have a paper, and just to kind of recap on some highlights as far as where we are in Park County with childcare. So looking at the most current census data and some other really great resources from numbers, you can see we're serving around half of the children in need in Park County for childcare. And of course, that makes it extremely challenging for adults to be in the workforce when that's an issue. So that is why my office originally became engaged in this. Since then, we have done a strategic plan regarding childcare. We have an early care and education coalition in our community. So we are actively working to improve what these numbers state today. An opportunity was presented. The Lilly Foundation provided a $50 million, I guess lump sum, into Early Learning Indiana to execute a grant program specifically for ages zero to three, and that is to enhance the knowledge and skills of those children as they develop, with the early years being extremely important. And what they want to see is a lot of community partnerships occurring as an applicant, applications into this grant. So at this point, where we are, is the community foundation is going to be an applicant for the grant, so they will be in charge of any of the administrative dollar side of things. I am actually writing the grant. We are partnering with Community Action Head Start to increase the capacity that they have at their existing facility. They have three dormant classrooms that are not being utilized. The program they run out of there today is federally funded for Head Start specifically during school years, and they cannot use any of those federal Head Start funds to do what we're talking about today. So what we're looking at doing is taking those three classrooms, serving eight infants, eight toddlers, and 16 preschool-aged children in that facility. It would be ran as a year-round childcare facility.
Right now, Head Start's not year-round, it's just during the school year.
Correct. Correct. So that really increases what they're doing today in that facility. They are partnering by not charging, I will say, anything in the budget for this grant opportunity, for like utilities, building maintenance, they will absorb that cost. We are going to apply for $500,000 to do this activity, which will include, you know, anything to do with modifying the classrooms, to salaries, to playground outside areas, because they have to be separated for those different age groups, they cannot be combined. Their hours of operation would be 6:30 to 5:00. We would give priority to households that are challenged with finding childcare due to working. So it'll be for employed households, as I'm calling them. And there would, again, be priority for those at the lower income that qualify for voucher programs that are available to them to illustrate that they're working and require this assistance. So our ask today, as Jim said in our presentation last Friday, when he said, is there a one-time expense in which we may be able to consider some art money? We are asking if you would consider matching what the foundation is committing as match dollars, which is $53,674. So I'm here for questions.
Okay. Just so folks out front understand, the average cost last year on the numbers that they had at that meeting, for one child in Park County, for high-quality early care means not just babysitting, it's education as well, was $7,930 for one child. So if you had one child, you take that over 50 weeks, say you're going to be home two weeks for vacation, and you've got kids with you then, that's $158 a week those people living in poverty now are expected to pay for childcare. And it's just an amazing number to me. I don't know how you do that if you have, and if you have two, that's $300 a week you're paying to have your child taken care of and given an education, not just a babysitter being with them somehow. So the needs, needs are great. We have 638 kids under six years of age and need care. We only have 353 known spots in the county. And we only have 84 spots for children in getting the high-quality education and care that we need.
And I'll just say, high quality is really based on Indiana. They have a program, levels one through four, high quality's levels three and four. So we have less than 30% of, even just in general, spots that are considered high quality.
The low volume, so it would be more basic, just babysitting.
So the facility here could handle 32 more, is what you're saying?
Yes. Yes. They have the classroom space for it.
Half again, as many.
And year-round.
Quality education, yes. And being year-round when they are closed during the summer, then will you have to absorb the cost for air and electricity?
No, because they keep the utilities on year-round.
Okay.
Yes. And I will, I will say one other thing, for working with Community Action, not only are we really trying to give those in need a little boost, you know, hopefully to remain in the workforce, is they do the high quality, they also engage parents. So through their Head Start program today, they have a program, it's called PAWS, PAWS, and it's a parent activity. So parents are required to participate, you know, in what's going on with their child. And that is something that they would like to introduce into this as well, so that we have some adult interaction with the program. They also do what they call early learning home visits, so that is actually while the mother is still pregnant, if they're needing assistance in some educational things to consider once the baby is born, you know, how do you interact with your child in a positive way? They have programs like that as well that they'll be using. We also will be doing parent workshops, so anyone engaged here, and we're hoping to do it in a more general public. So there's, you know, maybe a 15-minute activity that you can then take home whatever the pieces are, and practice that with your child, specifically for the kind of pre-preschool ages. So we really want to focus a lot on the education side, and education's not actually reading a book, but it's understanding emotions, motor skills, you know, all of those things. Because when we were doing the strategic plan and with the coalition, we saw numbers, like 14% of the children were repeating kindergarten meeting, they couldn't pass kindergarten. And when you look at the state average, it's 4%. So there are some of those numbers that were, because of the early five program, was showing as a coming back in. But when we pulled those out, we're still much higher than the state average. So we need to prepare children to enter the school, and they're required to learn so much more before they ever hit that. And this is, this is why this is important to us. So not only is it helping parents be in the workforce, but also creating a really good, you know, future generation of workforce, people that are skilled. One of the things that we learned Friday in the video we watched, just over 20% of the work, I'll say, working ages or workforce ages between, I think it was 18 and 24, were actually eligible to join the military. So like, if you can't even join the military, how are you going to get a job at IBM or something like that? So it was a pretty scary number nationwide.
So you are saying, then, it will affect more than just these 32 that you have room for?
Absolutely. I mean, year after year, and this grant is a three-year, over a three-year period. So we are supporting three years with the future of looking how to sustain it. So it'll be a nice transition if they qualify to go into Head Start, if they're in the childcare program, they'll just slide nicely in there, that opens up more spots to come in.
And realize that if this $50,000 is the number, we, when you, of our 3.2 million that we were given, that this is 1.5% of, so it's 1% of the money that we got that we're considering dedicating to this purpose. What do you think, guys?
You know, when we went into the, received the art, I think we all kind of said, you know, we wanted these monies to make a difference. We, you know, we weren't going to just use these monies for operating purposes, or we wanted to help our community and, and with like the internet fiber optics stuff. That was going to be a long-term benefit to a large group of people. And I think something like this fits right into those type of definitions of benefiting a group of people and making a difference in a group of people.
Yes.
And so I think it fits into what we had kind of, to start with, thought we were wanting to use the art money for. So I'm supportive of it personally.
I as well. I totally agree with you. I couldn't agree with you more. I can't think of anything else that down the road benefits the community for it.
If you don't invest in that future, I don't know why you invest in anything, if you don't like to invest in the future, so.
You're all right. I'd just make a motion that we award, if you want to call that, the matching amount that the community foundation is putting in, $53,674 of our art money to match this contribution the foundation is doing to help maybe be able to get this grant.
And I'll second that.
Okay. And understanding also going forward, and grant request going forward, it's really good when a county such as us can show that it's not just the foundation, it's just not Park, partnership Park County, it's not just any, any group. The county also is taking participation in this, and we're all working together to try to do a good thing. I definitely agree with that as well. So spin move to second that we, we match the foundation's grant of the funds they had, which is $53,674. Move to second to approve that, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Take care of that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Oh, I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. You know, it's those kinds of things that nobody hears about, nobody knows. I wasn't even aware of the deficit that we have, what a disadvantage our young people are, and they just are. And so if we can, if we know that deficit exists, and we can help in some way, a little way to make that less bad, how can we choose not to do that? If this is some little thing that might make a difference in somebody's life? You just don't know what that kid's going to be, you just don't know what that youngster's going to open up, or his possibilities in his future by helping somebody. So I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're doing that, I'm glad you're doing that, we appreciate your effort and hope that, hope helps.
Well, thank you. And I just want to say, in addition, you know, to the foundation, we've had other nonprofits and a for-profit business. Scott Pett invested in the original strategic plan, so I think our business community will appreciate that as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep. And just a reminder, everybody, so you know, these are not general fund dollars, this is not your property tax or, you know, income tax or any of your tax going to that. Obviously, they're federal dollars, so they're taxed from somebody. But they are federal dollars that the counties, all the counties were given to spend on worthwhile projects within their counties, and that's what we're doing here in this instance. Okay. Let's go back then to our regular schedule here. We have an out-of-cycle check from the Sheriff's Department.
And Kirby.
And Kirby Risk, yep.
Got two of them. And the council has to approve the additional appropriation.
On both of them?
Yeah, but if you approve it, then when the council approves it, we'll pay them.
I made a motion to approve the two out-of-cycle checks, the one for Park County Sheriff's Department and one for Kirby Risk.
I'll second that. Move to second to approve the two out-of-cycle check requests, one to Kirby Risk and one to Park County Sheriff's. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, we have an SRI agreement.
We have two of them. Ones.
There we are. You seen these, Nick?
Yeah, I did. It's just their standard agreement that we've done in the past.
Any change from, what we've done in the past?
I didn't look at the dollar amounts, I don't really have a way of knowing that, but...
They, SRI raised their amount from 100 to 125.
Okay.
But that's passed through the tax sale.
We don't pay that.
No.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, I make a motion, and then we approve the SRI agreement and the tax sales support services.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'll second that.
Move to second, all in favor, say aye.
I'll go.
All three of us.
Yeah.
You might look at what we're signing these, there's a letter there from Boaz McKinney concerning the Southwest Parks School Corporation.
I've already sent this to Nick, and he just said that you guys need to look at it.
Okay.
Is there an issue with it, Nick, that you were... You know, it's pretty lengthy.
I didn't know either.
It looks like it's a statutory required notice to elected officials, so.
So something the school corporation can do, but they're just notifying us that we're doing it?
Right.
Okay. So we don't need to take any action on that?
It doesn't require your approval or anything.
There's just going to be increasing taxes.
Sure. Yep. So that letter's just for our information of what's going on there. Then we have a request here for our contribution to West Central Solid Waste District. And we addressed this, there was a large surplus that the solid waste had, and we reduced our payment for the past few years since 2015, and that surplus now has decreased in half about, it's gone from 1.5 million down to 640,000. So they are going in the right direction on those.
Yeah, which I think makes it go back up to 250 per person, an increase of 4,039 a year.
And what this is for is for the dumpsters, the recycling out there.
And the tox-away, that is, tires.
So it's just a contract, but we agree to be a partner, then we're going to pay our $40,390, which is a $4,000, four-dollar increase. Will there be a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, and we approve the West Central Solid Waste District contribution request of $40,390 for 2024.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. I have a couple things here, and new business still I want to bring up, let me get these All right. First off, speaking of solid waste, at the recycling, I had a message this last week, somebody left a bunch of stuff outside of the, outside of the bins. And looking, there's really, it's one of those things where you think everybody knows, but obviously they don't. I had a friend stop, and he was going to leave four bags there himself, because others are outside. And I said, you just can't do that, you just, it's just littering, and you can be cited for littering, it's on private property, and we just have permission from them to have our recycling bins placed there. So we probably need some recycling signs, some signs to say, big enough people can see to not leave any, any material outside the bins, if the bins are full, take it home with you, bring it back. I don't know, Randy? I don't know, Randy, signs, those metal signs, two by two, what kind of money piece are those generally speaking?
Oh.
Couple hundred bucks?
Probably, yeah, two or three.
Okay.
Depends how much litter you want on.
Yeah, okay. So one might be enough to put it between the, between the bins there or put it by the other sign. Typically, people aren't going to read the signs. They're just going to go and dump whatever they dump anyway. But I think it'd be something we could, we could put, and I post all the time, but if the schedule is going to be the same, that new bins come Monday, Wednesday and Friday, we might put that on the sign too. We can decide, or you guys can decide what you want on the sign, but I'm okay with spending my, to buy the signs, but I think they need to be there. Do we have funds that we can use for those types of unplanned things?
Are you thinking since on private property, just take like a wheel and a tire, a little metal post on it?
To do that?
Between them or?
We could do that.
If you can't put on the bins, they'll be swapped out.
We could put it on the, in the ground right next to the bin. I'm sure you'd be fine. There's squeakers right there and the other signs, I think in the ground, there's.
Okay, so there's already a wooden out there.
I can ask Ron if we can do that and see if that'd be okay. But if you want to, okay, to buy a sign and see if that's sufficient, maybe up to three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars to cover the, cover the cost, you know, give the grant, you see what we need to put on, order. If you think it helps, you think it's a reasonable thing to do.
It's hard shit on the earth.
Ruth, you okay with that? Well, I make the motion that we approve up to four hundred dollars to create a sign that recycling instructing people that they can't leave stuff outside of the bins.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And what, find the four hundred dollars, Pam can find it. We have funds someplace that we don't have money out of, whatever that takes, so you'll find it. Sheriff?
You seem all confident.
I know you can, you can cite, and I think we were looking at that last time, with the last people that did this, on the state statute. Do we need a county ordinance that's on private property, but it's our recycling bins that we pay for to have there? Do we need an ordinance with a finable amount on there that if people do that, they can, they can be fined?
Maybe a sign warning about littering, but I don't see why we need.
Any more than that?
Okay.
I'd use the state statute. It's going to have more teeth anyway than what we can have.
I just, you know, I clean those mess, I go out there, I pick a cardboard out of that, out of there next yard all times of day. I'm usually there about five thirty in the morning, between five fifteen and five thirty, check to see if the bins are full. And I'll post that and I'll clean up, mess it up. I have to. I know that's not my job, but I know we just do get some in their yard, so we need to try to get that to stop. If people can just understand, I don't want to punish people. I don't want to fine people. I don't want to get in their pocket. I just want them to quit doing this stuff. So if we can make it so they understand that you can't do that, maybe that, maybe that helps.
I'm guessing probably a couple hundred dollar fine.
Okay.
Not sure.
Okay. Well, we'll see how that works out then. We already did the, our funds. Health department, there is a, as you're probably aware with the commissioners, the state has the new health department funds available. All we have to do is opt into the plan and over three years plan, I suppose you guys got those emails on how those fundings would work? In, in two thousand and twenty-five, we were looking probably half a million dollars available to us. And really, the matching part is no more, as I'm told, no more than what we're paying now for our health department staff. So there's really no reason not to engage with the state to do this. It's being recommended by the health department that we do this, the health department board. And if we don't like it, we always opt out. You can always change your mind and opt out of it. So I would make the motion that we notify the state that we will opt in to the new health funding possibility offered by the state.
We'll second that.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
I will let them know. I'll let the health department know and stuffy laws can let the, let the state know and find out whatever we have to get in place. I was asked by the county council to, Chris Newcomb is not on perf, just as we are not on perf.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
Well, okay, then according to Roy, you're not. And that's Roy's one that asked me to put him on, and he's never been.
He is on perf.
Well, we don't have to do anything. Now, what's Roy talking about?
I, I don't think they know where the perf money comes from.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I'll let him know.
I think, I think they don't see it coming out of the twelve nineteen fund. The perf, the employer portion of the perf or the parking rent comes out of the general fund. So since they don't see a line in twelve nineteen.
Well, that's good then.
Yeah, he's on perf.
Oh, good, okay. Because I was asked specifically to get him and retroactive to the beginning of the year. So good. Okay, I'll let him know. Thank you. Then the only other thing I have is we have dealt with that house in Bellmore for multiple years, the plant commission had, I know, for a long time. I was out by there again just a couple of days ago. Neighbors complained about rodents. Health department needs to get involved. That place either needs to be cleaned up or torn down. And we need to encourage whatever entities have the authority to do that, to do that. So I think we, as commissioners, need to make a motion requesting that the health departments and the sheriff's department, whatever is involved, to begin to pursue whatever is necessary to get that place cleaned up.
Is there ordinance that we can put in place that will help? What is the deal?
So we had that. I assume it's the one that's on the south side there, right past the light.
Yes.
We had a case a few years ago and they did clean it up to the extent that I was authorized to not pursue it further. But now they're right back to where they were. So what would need to happen is that they were cited with an ordinance violation again, and I can proceed to court on that.
You need authorization for most of it?
It would take a law enforcement or the health department or somebody of that nature to cite them. They know, they know how to do that.
You can do that tomorrow.
Yeah.
You don't need us to direct you or anything to do that? You can just do that?
Right under the ordinance.
Yeah, they have the authority to do that and we can proceed from there.
Then we're just asking.
I thought we'd written them in the past, like you said.
Yeah.
Then we're just asking. If you will, then do that.
This was about, is right after I started signing.
I remember.
Four years ago, maybe or so, and.
You took them recording. I'm amazed they started cleaning it up.
They did, they did clean it up and, but now it's worse than ever was, so.
What ordinance is it? What all this is coming?
I can send it to you. I don't remember what we titled it as. I mean, typically, it's a nuisance statute in most communities. I don't remember what we titled it as, but.
Does our litter ordinance address anything there? When we passed about ten?
So this statute has teeth more than that would though, because that would only be a couple hundred bucks. The nuisance part is like a twenty-five hundred dollar fine.
Okay, great.
And if you remember, there was a property out west of town, it burnt down not too long ago, but we, we used the same statute on that property.
Yeah, and the judge fined them big time.
He did, yeah.
Twenty-five hundred dollars every day.
Right, and they owed like twelve thousand or something on the house burn or something like that. So this would be the same process, same statute.
Okay.
Is that person still living out there?
Supposedly.
The husband is.
It looks vacant. The window is real.
Yeah.
Yeah, supposedly in that trailer is where they're living, is what we've been told.
Tracking him down, tracking him or her down.
Yeah, supposedly it's the husband living there.
Yeah.
If you pursue that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Thanks, guys. And that's all I have. You guys have anything for new business? Anything for old business?
Six seventy-five north.
Yeah, we got, Randy gave a ordinance, a request here to Nick for County Road six twenty-five. It's, I'm interested to read it to you. Motor vehicle traffic on County Road six twenty-five north in Park County from two point six five miles west of County Road two hundred east to one point one one two miles west of County Road two hundred east for a total of point eight four seven miles. All in Park County shall not exceed the speed of thirty miles per hour. So I'd make the motion that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three.
I didn't break the list with.
Good question. Pam, do you have any idea what ordinance we're on? To be determined. Would this leave it numbered?
Just wait a minute. Give your minutes.
Okay.
Look in your minutes. Could you approve, whatever's next, because the council didn't approve any ordinances, so in the, in the five fifteen minutes.
Two or three.
I think it's two because the one was approved last time.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three, two.
Okay. So I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three two dealing with County Road six twenty-five. Could we approve same day, same meeting?
No, seconded.
All in favor say aye? Then I make the motion, we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash two dealing with County Road six twenty-five going to a thirty mile an hour speed limit. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Want this one signed?
Uh, yeah, that's the only one that there is. It needs to be published within thirty days.
Okay.
For one week?
One week. I think there's instructions on there, so you don't have to remember.
Good call, Pam. See, you have value. You're good.
I'm not completely worthless. I spend most of my time eating my bonbons and watching stories.
I know, me too. Funny how that is, New York.
I drink a margaritas.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd have a copy of that there again.
Where do you get your bonbons at?
I make them. You want some?
Again, that's, that's from just east of.
You got to send two spots. One, same day, same meeting, and then that's, yeah, your name.
Okay, gotcha.
So I got to send it back their way.
Yeah. In theory, you could agree to have a vote on it, but yet reject it if you wanted to.
Yeah. One must been for same day, same meeting.
Yeah, I need to.
Ruth, I had.
Very own.
There you go. Did you sign that one too? Yes, you did.
Um, I talked to them about the letters. They were okay with me drafting those and sending those out to the property ownership, so. So I'll get that. I'll send it to you before I send it, so you see what I said to them.
Okay, well, let's go through this stuff. Randy, you're up on the list first. What you got?
Well, we got the, need your approval and signatures to, so we can do the bidding for the contract paving for three fifty north.
Okay.
All of those we just got awarded.
Okay.
Got two copies.
Will those be done this summer?
Yeah.
Great.
We're going to, we'll open your next meeting on seven three, if you need after next.
Okay, gotcha.
And then the ward is on seven seventeen.
Okay. Go over the base on seven.
We'll open them on seven three and a ward on seven seventeen.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Okay, I appreciate getting sand on B-Dell Road there. It was really sticky and slimy the other day.
Yeah.
I just told him it's just going to be like wax, it'll be a couple of years.
Yeah, you can have it on.
Stuff.
That one's all signed.
Okay. That is so wrong that there is no other source of satisfaction on that. Then just getting some money back. It's just so wrong.
Was that, was that a new file oil or was that just too much?
Maybe too much. They just mixed it wrong. They did the same thing with waxey a couple of years ago. And of course, you don't know until you get it down and it gets hot. You just don't, there's no way to know that, you know? County didn't make it, county didn't blend it. It was just, I guess, milestone, whatever it was, it's where everybody's coming from. So we had to go out one summer on Waxey Road, just darn near every day, couldn't sound.
Like you'd have in West Street too.
Yes, you did, yes.
Could you send, send us a copy of that?
And that is so, so wrong.
Yeah.
Well, maybe this kind of wonders, we never used to have that problem too bad.
Yep, no.
I didn't know if it was different oil or what it was.
Well, it was different oil, but they just mixed too much of it when they were doing it. Yep. And, and last time, the guy who was in charge of that, I don't want to put a name out there, but he, he was on vacation when they were mixing it. And when we put it down, he wasn't even around. So we put it down just like we got. I mean, they, they mixed the pot for it. I mean, the pot mill comes and they mix the, the stuff for us to paint, to put down. And you, it looks, looks rotten till you put it down and roll it and get it in place, and then all of a sudden, it's ninety-five degrees and here it comes, you know? Frustrating.
And we'll start Wednesday and Thursday, chip and seal on them two roads. Whole that'll help it. May hurt, I don't know. Get it to where we don't have to go out there every day and do something. Let's try hold plate. Martin Road's been recycled and stoned.
Good. Everybody okay with that? I know you sent letters out to everybody and I think you talked to everybody. They were all okay.
Anybody respond to it, so. And the ones we talked to when we was doing it, they, they was happy with it.
It's a road that we are going to go back and double chip seal again, but we had to grind it up first and then put rock down. But rock needs to be down for a year before you chip seal over it, just to get the bad spots patched, so the whole stuff settles, you got a good, good base. And so before they took that really beaten up chip seal road down to Rock, he talked to all the people living on that road, let them know what was going on. They were, they were okay with that.
Our patching is almost done, except for just a very few roads. I'll keep two patch machines going.
Okay.
I think we'll be able to anyhow. Our dust control, it'll be done tomorrow. The Roseville Bridge should be open by the end of the week.
Good.
Before, but.
Good.
We'll save the end of the week.
If you would let me know when you know what, what day that is, I'll make sure to get that information.
Now, like I said, we're going to chip and seal B-Dell Road and Golf Course Road Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay.
Then after that, we're going to go to pavement.
Okay.
I got to make some room for the rest of our material down to Park County Avenue.
So the material is different than what we have on B-Dell Road? It's different stuff? It's not the same stuff?
It's about like we used to use.
Okay, I mean, yeah, we're likely to have this problem with another road now. Same, different stuff, okay. I had a request for, he stopped talking to me today and lives on the road there by the Christian Church in Rockville. About some evergreens had apparently planted out close to the road. I've not been there to see it. And they're riding the road, said you can't get two cars by, scratch the vehicle all the time. Can we get those cut back or taken out?
Now, we can do it, but I'll have to talk to property owners first, probably should.
Do we have to talk to property owners? The trees are out in our right of way?
It's probably the right path to go forward. I mean, you're not required to, but you ought to.
Company has had to buy a few trees.
Right, it'd be a good idea to have that conversation.
Correct. Is that something we can do? Can you begin that?
I'll see if I can get it.
He said he'd been asking for five or six years. I mean, I just don't know those, act that those numbers are, but I understand frustration there. So if we could do something with that. And are the trees actually in our right of way? Are they in our ditch that's our right of way or are they clearly off the right of way?
No, I think they're off the right of way, but just to live there.
But then they hang out into it, yeah.
Pretty good sized tree.
Okay.
Unlike those down here on Breaston Road, you know.
Okay, yeah.
They are planted back on the backside of the ditch, but they grow too.
Yeah.
I mean, they grow.
You're still in the right of way, Randy?
Yeah, I know.
Well, if you would look at that one, I'll, I'll let him know that you're going to, you're going to do something with that, whatever you can. I hate to forego him another year.
He's the property owner or he's not the property?
He just lives that road and he not moving two cars to go through without getting in his truck into it and just someone, he's just someone driving through lanes going, going home. I understand it. We don't want that anywhere. But he says he's asked for quite some time and it's not been fixed, so that's why I'm asking if we can get it fixed. Okay, what else you got?
Well, I think that's all I have, unless you guys have anything for me.
How are you staff wise?
Like, within about two, I think.
Okay. With the.
I've got a couple of applications, but trying to hold off for some CDLs.
Excavator back yet?
No, not yet.
When do you think that'll be?
Well, we got the transmission cooler. They had to build us a new one, so we got it today. The mechanic I had on that, he's, he was in a car wreck over the weekend.
Did he brand it?
No.
Yeah.
We claim happy. I think his name, yeah, Dan Solomon.
Okay. Hope he's okay.
Well, I hope so, yeah. Haven't heard anything today. Texted me last evening and said we wouldn't be there today, him or his brother. So we'll get to work on it as soon as we can.
Okay.
It's like for him to be there when we put it back. He took it all apart, so I don't want to get screwed up putting it back together.
Sure. Okay.
Because I imagine that's coming in an expensive part.
Well, if you can let me know a day or two be best about that bridge, then I'll make sure the Channel Ten, they've been following it really carefully. They've been doing a good job for us.
As soon as we get it made open, I'll let you know. This was without the lettering on it yet.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, with Barney, when we get done with it, people's scheduled to do that.
Yeah, we need, there's a couple that need to be lettered, re-lettered too. New bridge that needs to be re-lettered. It's pretty, pretty bad shape. Got a couple more, so once you talk to him, maybe we can get a list of them together, then you can start working on those and get those, get those turned out. We still have a change to bridge measure, which we've never done, about getting the commiserated up on that. So we need to get that done as well. Oh, any idea on the, sure. Roseville, the bridge that you're gonna re-size?
Oh, no, he didn't look, hadn't told me anything other than you said sometime this summer.
Thorford?
Thorford, yeah, yeah.
Somebody called today and asked who was working on the Thorford.
Yeah.
It was me.
Oh, yeah, okay. We're not working on it yet.
Yeah, I know, that's what Jim told me.
But we're gonna be.
Because this is what happened. Susan doesn't necessarily know the bridges like a lot of us do.
Sure.
Jim refers to the Coxville Bridge as the Coxville Bridge. You refer to it by its real name, the Roseville Bridge. When I was, in minutes, I'm like, are we talking Roseville or are we talking Coxville?
I have to stop and think before I say that, because I generally call it Coxville.
She had it as Rosedale Bridge. She didn't realize Coxville is Roseville.
Actually legally, it, it is back to Roseville. The whole area there was changed to Coxville eighty years ago. I don't think it's been a hundred years ago, but then.
You don't remember that?
Then the Rose family, but you didn't tell me. I was, you were driving my school bus, I think, at the time.
Yeah, good old Chauncey Rose.
The Rose family took it to court and they got the name legally changed back to Roseville instead of Coxville. But nobody knows, everybody else is Coxville, Coxville Road, Coxville Bridge, and that's what it always is, but.
Always wondered about, turned out to be Coxville.
But it's, but it's true. If somebody bought a, or had a business down there and they just changed that little village's name to Coxville instead, and that's what it was.
Maybe it takes care.
Yeah, could've been, yeah, could've been.
Could've been.
Somebody he knew. Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
You guys have a good evening.
You too.
All right. Chris O'Brien back there, is he wanting anything?
I'm just asking him on there.
Okay.
He didn't ask.
Oh, okay, I got you.
It's Dora Shayla.
Gotcha. Yeah, Mary, I said he didn't have to be on. She just had him on there.
Jail count today is seventy-four. County makes fifty-nine. DOC's five, one away. And then nine are the other county holds.
Who are you getting from?
I think most of them are Sullivan County.
They got their new jail done now?
Everybody else has new jails around, I think.
Yeah.
Except for Millen and Fountain are pretty well set up now. Inmate billing year to date is one hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars. Reported collections year to date is forty-four thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. And then also last week, we turned on our new phone system.
Good.
Which got the automated answering system, which is cool. I guess he is good.
Before you get away, Chris, did you have something for us?
I did not, no.
Okay, I just wanted to check. Didn't wanna, didn't wanna leave you hanging. I'm sorry, Jason, go ahead.
That's all, all I have. Just saying our new phone system's up and running.
Everything worked the way you wanted it to?
Yeah, so far. Voicemails come to email, which is a pretty nice feature.
Nice. So if somebody calls and it didn't get you?
Right.
And the voicemail, but the voicemail, convert it to text and send you an email on there?
No, it's just natural. Their voicemail is sent to our email.
I got you.
And it's instantaneous, finishing, so pretty cool feature to have.
It is, yeah. Good. So how you holding up?
Good.
Are you?
Yeah.
A little tired today.
Budget time, so.
Oh, you are tired today.
You look well rested.
No sheriff I've had all year.
Been fishing?
I have.
All right, jealous.
Been tired for a week.
Jealous.
Budgets due Friday, so we'll be better after that.
Okay.
We're doing good.
Okay.
Doing well.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Sir Zep? Thanks. All right. Julie has an agreement for us for the, the things that the ARCA funds agreed to purchase Lucas devices for the first responders. Lucas devices are devices that can put on a person who has need of CPR and it can maintain that CPR endless for them until you get to, to hospital someplace. So the ARCA funds were approved, were approved by the ARCA committee. I'll do my committee then, if that's okay. And we've already approved, I just need to sign these, sign these documents then. All right. You have something for us, Ms. Wood?
I faxed, emailed you guys a copy of all these, so you could go over them.
And I did, I stayed up all night, went to the airline by line on those. Yes, I did, yeah.
You just need to approve them.
Okay. It's one of those things, which I appreciate your effort, but they mean nothing to me.
I don't, because.
It's like us approving the payroll claims report, you know, acknowledging that we got it, sure.
The budget's a problem, it's gonna be in the budget.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. But how would we know any of those numbers are accurate or correct or anything?
Well, they're just, you're just approving what, that they're asking for a reasonable amount. The state requires it.
We're just acknowledging that we got it.
It's a state board of accounts for.
Yeah, I know, I know how they are.
All right, so nothing you need from us then?
No.
Tommy, tell me about that Indianapolis. What are you gonna do there? I saw you, you must've dug something there or did the county dig something?
That cove in front of my house. Are you gonna move it?
Don't wanna have any plans on doing that.
That's what I was, I was told you're gonna lower it on Monday.
Lower it? Randy, have you?
That's what they, they want us to do.
Who's they?
Well, that's what I kinda figured.
Who's they?
The builder house, Mary.
Yeah.
Mary Pierce.
Yes, Kramer, yes.
It's, it's a new pipe going, been in there about three years.
Yeah, but it had up some village in it, but it won't do the same good, go deeper, but Tom's side is filled up.
Let me tell you what we got real quick, so you understand. You built a house.
I dug the butt of foot about a mile out. I'm down the rip ramp. It's rip ramp there on my side. I done the dirt off the end and passed it.
If the water's, if the water's going through the culvert, lowered culvert, it don't do anything but, well, less capacity unless you're in a ditch area.
Only concern, I don't wanna mess up my side.
What we got is, we got a road, Hilltop Road going from Tony's old gas station into town.
Yep.
On the south side, on the north side of the road at that corner, Mary must've built a house. And she has some kind of a walkout or drive-out at the end of her house there. And there's a big ditch that comes down to carry water to that, to that culvert. That culvert then goes under the road and comes out in Tom's field, that, that, that right of way. I mean, that waterway has always been there forever, runs through a creek down there. And I'm sure over the years, it's filled up, I'm sure it's filled in, so now it's high. And she, water will not run out of her field across there because it gets into that, into that pipe. And the pipe's some half full or something, something there.
That's that much, yeah.
Yeah.
Or twenty-four.
So I don't know, I mean, I'm certainly not the engineer, need to look at that. But I don't know that we have to accommodate anything on the north side to make that water leave their property any better than it was because they cleaned out a ditch down and made, made, made a water run there. I don't know how we get to that point. I, I believe and I understand, and you would too. I'm sure your ditch is filled in over the years with cattle and stuff. I'm sure that, that waterway.
I've done some of mine out.
On the very end, I saw where you had, yeah.
It always, it always worked good before.
Yes.
And then over top the road.
Yes.
Didn't stand in the field.
Yeah. Well, she said to me that it stood in the field. I stood there and that whole long time before I ran out. I don't know about that, because I never noticed it before, because there was none. That was our property, that's where I lived.
She said you grew up.
Yeah, and I don't remember ever seeing any wire standing there.
Until they started building the house.
Okay.
And just good looking to me. I mean, I'm old and may not be looking right either. I don't think there's enough elevation from the lower part of the, or drive-out, or walk-out, whatever it's called.
You're right. It's level. It's level, you're right. It's level. There's no slope from the house. There's no slope for a long way. There's no slope at all, it was.
So the slope she makes is lower than the, than the pipe, it's high, so it's not gonna.
Have to come out of that house, that base, but it's level.
Yeah. They put some stone in there now. They haven't spread it, but they got positive. I don't, I didn't know. And I saw you had dug yours out a little bit on the, on the south side, so I didn't know if they'd accept that.
See, I don't want to run a ditch down through my pasture.
Sure.
I think it's still, and I think that walkout was an afterthought too.
Is what?
I think the walkout was an afterthought. Originally what.
It's not gonna run out there real deep until it's four foot of mud. And there's gonna be another problem, maybe. You know, your concrete box that your pipes run into?
Yeah.
That cut one north side in out.
They did.
Well, what's that gonna happen when you have a flood up north, east, other field green into the same place?
Yeah.
It comes to the other road, it's about this big.
Yeah.
Comes down there, that's gonna force their water back up to them because that wall's gone.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't understand.
That pipe's not gonna take all that, because that other pipe's gonna have enough force and a big rain, if we ever get one, it's gonna force it right back somewhat and keep it from draining.
Yeah, I don't know what the solution to that is. I know that our culvert is where it was. How, how long ago, do you figure, how long ago did you put that in?
Well, six, seven, eight years, something like that.
No.
Maybe that long, maybe?
No, you put a new pipe in there, Bucky did, about three years ago. The pipe's been there ever since I lived there.
It was longer than three, because that was, they're running the grain off almost four.
Would, would the pipe have been put back at the same level it came out?
He lowered it.
Think he even lowered it some?
He lowered it some, I can't.
That can't be our responsibility to have to change that, change that culvert, because somebody wants to have a ditch in their yard.
Well, here's another thing. I'm not, never got to haul the exact rules on it, but they can't change the natural flow.
No.
Well, they have, to, to extent. And they can't change the natural flow and add water to it from someplace else.
Now, they, they can concentrate, so let's talk about that for a minute. Even though they dug a, dug a ditch there, all that water ran down that field to that ditch by the highway, ran to that pipe, ran through your field anyway. They, they have not redirected water that used to go someplace else. All that water came from that field anyway. So now, I would agree that maybe it would've settled in, soaked up in the ground more, but being on a flatter field for a long amount of time. So, but they haven't changed any, any routes. So DNR's gonna be okay. I've been down that road with DNR many times. That you're okay with that, you can concentrate a, a water amount, you just can't change the flow of a water amount. So if it before was running into a different ditch, they can't now make it run into your ditch. They cannot do that. But if it always came out of that field, that ditch, okay.
There's a gray area there because what they done, it never did have that much water coming there because it's pretty much flat.
They've, they've concentrated it, but.
They've concentrated it into one area.
But DNR will let them do that, so long as it's still going to the same pipe it was going through before. I, I know that, because we do that down on, on Coxville Road, remember just south of the school? Those neighbors were fighting because the water was coming down the hill and into his place all the time? Because they had changed something and the DNR came and that's what they told us. As long as it's still going to the same place it was going before, that's okay.
Yeah. What's causing it not to go through our tunnel under the road then?
They have dug their ditch lower than what we have.
If, if the water should get there, it will go through it.
It's, it's got that mud and it never will drain.
It's done before it just won't bite when you're beginning it.
Yeah. Here's our pipe, running this way in the, under the road.
Yeah.
And so that field used to come down to this, this level someplace and all that water would run through. They have brought their ditch down to about here someplace, and so it's, it's below the level of the pipe is. And they would like that to lower that pipe, so it would take that out, because they want that slope coming from their house down to here. But there's no way we can justify that.
If you lower that pipe, it's either gonna fill up with silt or it's gonna cut a ditch through his.
And if we, and if we cut that and make that so it's gonna be lower, it's not gonna flow until he gets a deeper ditch.
So why they cut their grade that way, then? How would that benefit them?
Probably more yard and keep the elevation up. That's the only thing I can say.
Yeah, because they sloped it.
It's a big slope, it's a big ditch.
Well, down to the bottom of that pipe now, but it's just a short distance.
Yeah.
They just wanted to get it out there quicker.
Yeah.
Because they never, if they don't taper that from all the way from the house, it ain't never gonna drain fast.
Yeah.
It's mud.
Their best.
Literally mud, four, three to four foot deep.
Their best bet probably would've been a tile, the whole thing, and.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Put a tile all the way from the house.
Probably would've been a better way to go, yeah.
And that ain't gonna work very good till it dries up or hardens up or something, because it's mud. I'm just trying to keep from naming it to my side.
Sure. When I, when I first looked at that, and I was gonna talk to you, somebody needs to come shoot that sometime. If it's gonna go, have to have a push, gun, shove, you gotta have some decision. Somebody will shoot that and, and see what the slope is and see if your pipe, if your waterway is filled up enough that now it's, it's higher, the, the bottom is higher than it used to be, so you're not hauling too much water off. And I'm sure it's filled in over the hundred years that we've lived there.
It's not too bad now, though. This, the pipe, it been in there very long.
Yeah, yeah.
The new one. I mean, the old was bad, they had to replace it, that's what I'm saying.
But if it's at the same level or lower.
It's lower. I think it's lower than it was, but not a lot.
So occasionally, Randy certainly ran into this, occasionally farmers or landowners have to go in and dredge out their, their waterway, their ditch, because it's filled in, it's not letting water go through anymore.
I dug out about a foot. I did it twice. I did it first time, then I dug down the, I got rip ramp.
Yeah, saw that.
The bucket put in there under my fence is right there.
Saw that.
On, on my side, I'm lower than that.
Yeah. I don't know. I hope you guys work that out, but, but I can see.
I just.
Somebody coming in and say, there's not enough slope in your ditch anymore.
He said, he come over, I had, come over one day, he said that pipe sloping like this. I don't think it is.
No, I didn't think it was either.
I'd be satisfied just leaving it alone.
And it doesn't matter. That, that pipe could be this way, as long as the water's running this way and out the other end, it could be, be fine with it.
I'd be satisfied just leaving it like it is.
Don't be, don't be surprised, and I'm not suggesting, but don't be surprised if, if DNR or somebody requires that, that, that your ditch be dredged out. We, we, we see that all the time. It is the homeowner's responsibility to maintain the water ditches. It is. Unless something's changed. Randy, it's always been that way, right? That it's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain the ditches.
I know a way that could change.
Yeah, so, so you may have to, you may have to dredge that out.
I'll, I'll say something I shouldn't say.
Well, be nice now.
I talked to Soil and Conservation people.
Yeah, they should know.
And you know what they told me? I think it's because he don't like me or something. He told me to plug it up, right to my face.
Can't do that.
I know it.
Yeah, you can't do that.
I know it.
Soil and water's.
I ain't gonna mention any names.
But somebody told you that?
Right, yeah.
You can't interrupt the natural flow of water. You already said that yourself, you know that. I know.
That's why I said, don't think you must not like me.
What you gonna say?
I know I'm getting trouble later.
Yeah, no, yes, you would.
But I did, I cleaned up about all I could with that, doing a big deal, and it's gonna help a lot.
I know with cattle in there, and Collins had cattle in there before when I was a little kid. You know, you've got a ditch and there, cattle are walking through it, it's gonna beat it down over there.
Well, see, yeah, because my cut, it's cutting on the other end down toward the other culvert on.
Yeah.
Now, because a big rain, it just cuts a ditch. About that wide, it just goes down.
So you may have to dredge it out a little bit to let that water from, go through there.
See, that's what I'm trying to keep from doing. I don't put rip ramp in there.
Yeah, I don't think you need to rip ramp at all, but you may have to lower the ditch level.
Well, I have some, we'll see. Whenever we get any rain, we'll see.
Okay.
But you can lower that pipe three feet and it gonna help him.
Right. I agree with that, yeah. Yeah. But.
Because.
But while you dug down, that, that part was up higher than the bottom of the pipe, so it was restricting the flow, the flow of the pipe.
Well, yeah, they saw still a little bit of rock. There's rip ramp in there, and I didn't know there. I cleaned all that out. It's gonna help a lot.
I just know from my experience, and we've been down this road before, that, that if, if your ditch is too full of, of sediment, they will require you, and they, they won't do it and we can't do it, that they'll require you to dredge that out to a whatever level, whatever level they come to tell you it has to be down to, so.
Yeah. But he's got a problem.
Yeah. Now you, no matter what you do on your side, it's not gonna fix it on his side. He needs to bring his level back up, get that water out of there.
Yeah, he said that you're gonna lower the pipe.
No, we're not. It's never been discussed. We're not gonna go around digging up cover to lower people.
And I'm surprised. Did he get permission to cut that wall out of that box?
Not from anybody, I know.
That ain't gonna help, because before they did, all the water went over the top of that.
Right.
Well, he's this much lower than that now.
Yeah.
So he's creating a problem to do.
Okay. Well, just don't be surprised if they tell you that's what's gotta be done.
Well, we'll see.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Nick, thank you.
One second.
Anything else we got?
That's all. It's the.
Move a second, be adjourned.
SRI.